Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the colored for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice strong.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda. The items listed below are considered routine, non-controversial by the city. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a council member, staffer, citizen. If removed, the item will be discussed at the end of the regular agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes for the following: City Council Work Session, February 4th, 2025; City Council Work Session, February 18th, 2025; and City Council Regular Meeting, February 18th, 2025. Item B, authorize the deputy mayor to execute an annual letter of adjustment with increase of four percent to the operation and maintenance agreement with People's Service Incorporated, effective March 1st, 2025, for operations and maintenance at the wastewater treatment facility. Item C, authorize the city administrator to execute a quote from Farm Right Equipment for the purchase of a 2023 Towmaster E-12 DT eighteen-foot galvanized trailer for the Public Works Department for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Item D, declare a 2007 Bobcat S-185 Skid steerer surplus equipment and eligible for sailor donation as recommended by the Public Works Maintenance Supervisor and authorize the city administrator to determine the process and best method for sailor donation of the equipment. Item E, authorize the Winstead Arts Council to conduct four music events and have food trucks available at Mill Reserve Park on July 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st of 2025 to waive any applicable permits or fees for the use of the park on those dates. Item F, authorize the deputy mayor and city clerk treasurer to execute an agreement with the Church of Holy Trinity, provide city services and other considerations for the 2025 Windstock Country Music Festival. Item G, approve the McLeod County Large Assembly Permit for Holy Trinity's Windstock Country Music Festival, June 20th and 21st, 2025. Item H, approve a dance permit for the Blue Note Ballroom, 320 Third Street South for the pre-Windstock Rumble event on Saturday, March 29th, 2025. Item I, adopt Resolution R-24-11, authorizing a transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. Item J, appoint Mr. Kent Landine to the position of seasonal part-time brush site monitor beginning April 1st, 2025 for a period not to exceed six months. Item K, accept the voluntary retirement of Mr. Ryan Chatterton from the Winstead Volunteer Fire Department, effective March 3rd, 2025. Item L, approve the pledge securities that the Security Bank and Trust Company has purchased from the city of Winstead for the month of February 2025. Item M, approve the building permit report for the month of February 2025. Item N, approve the financial report for the month of January 2025. And item O, approve the claims list for March 18th, 2025. This is a consent agenda, looking for a motion for approval?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, and I abstain from voting on item L.
Okay, do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Smash the gavel?
Yep. Very.
Unreal, that felt, that felt wonderful. Okay. Um. Next, we have the... I'm missing a page, aren't I?
I don't know, but you can skip the new business.
Okay. Oh, here we go. Uh, public hearings, nothing, old business, uh, now we're on to new business. Um, so. Item A is a planned service agreement and HVAC tracker for Schwickert's Hecta America LLC. Uh, looking for a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute a planned service agreement and HVAC tracker with Schwickert's Hecta America LLC to provide support, maintenance, and tracking of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems at city facilities for an amount not to exceed ninety-two thirty-six. Um, you want to elaborate a little bit on that, what that all covers?
Sure, so, uh, we had previously had, or we have previously had contracts with NAC. Uh, they sent out a new contract for amounts that would be in of six thousand dollars more than the Schwickert's bid and for year one, and for year two, it would be roughly about eight thousand dollars more. So, I decided to, um, while I was looking to see who else could service us, Schwickert's came in and took the exact same specs that we were looking for and, um, even added in a few things and still came in well under NAC.
Okay, uh, looking for a motion for approval on this?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute a planned service agreement and HVAC tracker with Schwickert Hecta America LLC to provide support, maintenance, and tracking of the heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems at city facilities for an amount not to exceed nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Can I get a second?
All second.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion granted. Uh, item B, Resolution R-25-12 Outdoor Recreation Grant Application for Hanlon Park. This, uh, we're looking for a motion to adopt Resolution R-25-12 approving the submission of an application to Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the outdoor recreation grant and authorizing the city administrator to execute agreements necessary to implement the grant project.
Yes, so, um, we're in the process of, you know, looking into getting this grant application, some matching grant. Hopefully, this will allow us to move quicker on rebuilding our re-sing of Hanlon Park and allow us to put in some actually very exciting playground equipment. And, um, that playground equipment adds up in a hurry, so if this grant can help support that, it will go a lot faster for us.
Fantastic opportunity.
Uh, looking for a motion for approval on this item?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution R-25-12 approving the submission of an application to the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the outdoor recreational grant and authorizing the city administrator to execute agreements necessary to implement the grant project.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C is a motion to adopt Resolution R-25-13 renaming the Winstead Pride Award the Steve Stocko Community Enhancement Award. Um, I don't think we need to turn this one over to Neil necessarily, um, just to take the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to adopt Resolution R-25-13 renaming the Winstead Pride Award the Steve Stocko Community Enhancement Award.
Looking for a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, now we're on to the organizational report. Or Lake Winstead Waverly Schools. Very good. I have a little packet.
Thank you.
I just can't.
Smaller than last packet.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get quicker to the point.
Yeah.
Professional goal. You got my respect, very good. I knew Justin would have, be on top of it. Okay, hey, thanks for, um, having me out today. Let me get adjusted here. Um, I got a couple of, uh, updates that I wanted to bring to you, and then, of course, if you have any questions during, uh, some of my updates or at the end, I'm happy to stand for them. I'd also, um, I'm also always open to suggestions or, or comments for improvement, especially as it relates to the school district, or myself, if you want to go that route too. Um, so, um, I really wanted to highlight four things for you, um, tonight. The first is the progress on our budget. Um, uh, the way that, uh, school districts measure the health of their budget is by, um, the amount that's in your fund balance. And this is the rainy day fund, um, that's anticipated to cover surprise expenses. Um, and districts have, um, policies in place as to what the level should be at. Um, in the case of HLWW schools, our policy fund balance amount is eight percent of our, um, annual expenditures. Um, when I started in July of 2024, our fund balance was at a hundred and twenty thousand thirty-six dollars, and I'm happy to report that our projected fund balance by the end of June is expected to be a little, little over one million dollars. Um, that's a significant improvement, and it's doing no small part to, um, the efforts of our board, um, our staff, but especially the support of our community members. Um, as you all know, um, last fall, we went out for an operating levy that was able to pass. Um, we also saw significant increases, increases in special education funding from the state. Um, as you also probably well know, um, we also experienced a couple of years where we, um, strategically reduced staff numbers, um, across the district. Um, human resources are the basic, most important, largest expense of any school district, and so if we're going to tackle any budget question at a district, you have to, at some point in time, get to the place where you have to reduce staff or, or change the way that they're compensated. Um, right now, we're right in the middle of working on next year's budgets, um, and judging by Tom's comment before we started, um, I imagine as you all are waiting with, um, with great interest as to what the legislature's next moves are going to be. Um, in the 2023 legislative session, uh, the legislature did build in to, um, general fund or general funding for school districts, but there's an inflator, um, an inflationary index that's tied to the CPI for the state of Minnesota. Um, and so we are anticipating at least a, um, two and three-quarter percent increase. Um, that basically amounts to another two hundred dollars per pupil. Um, that's going to be, uh, obviously super helpful, um, and I'm directing my business manager not to anticipate any other, um, revenue increases, just so he can be ultra-conservative on our budgets. Um, the second, uh, one was, um, we are anticipating a move to grade-level buildings, and you recall about five, six months ago, I came here to, to talk to you all a little bit about this. Um, in the event you, uh, you were paying attention, we had a very public process and a decision from our school board, um, throughout the fall of 2024 culminating in our December board meeting where the board made the decision to, to redistribute our grades, um, across, um, both Winstead and Humphrey Elementary. Um, right now, I have a, a team of about twelve staff members who are, um, taking a lot of time and a shocking amount of data and just combing through it one step at a time to make the best decision for our students. In fact, we had a meeting today after school for about two hours. Um, it's our goal to make a decision about which grade levels go to which building by the end of this school year, so we're hoping, um, by the end of June. Um, we do have a, uh, webpage on the district website that's dedicated to the grade level transition, um, and it has frequently asked questions, and then we are, um, we're updating it as the transition team makes recommendations. Um, it's important to note that we will not be implementing the grade level change until the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so we're still a year and a half away from, from any kind of change. Um, on the capital improvement front, we've done a lot of things that in the onset will, um, will cost the district some money, but in the long run, end up amounting to shocking amounts of change, um, and savings. Um, we, over the summer, we completed a lighting upgrade throughout the entire district. Um, every light now at Howard Lake Waverly Winstead is an LED, uh, whereas previously just sections of the middle school were. Um, this ends up amounting to an energy savings of nearly forty thousand dollars every single year, um, just by switching over to LED. So, that lighting project is going to pay for itself in about a year and a half, and then, um, every moment the lights are on after that is just money in the pocket of the district, which is great to see. Um, in the next month, at the, um, at the high school gym, we're going to be installing a video board, and if you've, uh, visited any number of, um, school districts, these are becoming very popular in high school gyms all of a sudden. Um, and this video board is paid entirely through advertisements and partnerships with, um, with local businesses, um, and people who donated money. Um, and, uh, that is going to generate another revenue stream for the district as we sell, um, advertising not only on the video board, but also through our online ticketing system that's all tied together. And so, um, we anticipate this, um, this, uh, bringing in between twenty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year to the schools.
Nate on that?
Yes, please.
One of the cool things on that for me, I think, is seeing that kids will have the opportunity now to take a class that will be related to this video board, whether it's production, I believe, sales, other aspects of what I get excited about by running a business, I guess, through that video board, so that's pretty cool.
You, you there, kids go out and do the solicitations for the advertisement?
Well, they might in the future, they didn't now.
This, uh, this time, um, this was a, a project that our athletic, our activities director, Mr. Punchaker, has been working on. Um, and like I said, the, whether it's a good or a bad thing, schools very much are, um, kind of keep up with the Joneses sort of organizations, and as you see more and more of these schools having video boards up, um, when you talk to them, it obviously has a nice aesthetic look, but, um, the, the strategic school districts have these partnerships set up where, um, the partnerships pay off the board, it's installation, and then is our, our revenue stream for the district. Um, some districts, um, and I think this is more just a, a taste or, or a vision that leadership has for the future of the district. Um, some districts are very leery about selling any kind of advertising space on their walls. Um, I, I'm not one of those. I'm, I'm okay generating some revenue if it means, uh, we open up some opportunities for kids. Um, it's also a unique, a unique chance to get, um, different organizations involved in the school that might not otherwise, um, be there. To Neil's point, the, the class is going to run, it's going to be taught by Mr. Punchaker, I, I pray for those children. Um, but, uh, he, um, in addition to talking about the video board and how those things relate, um, it's also intended to be a sports management class, so he's, he's going to talk about, you know, how, how do you organize, you know, twenty-five activities for thirteen hundred kids and get them their fees paid and their insurance covered and their transports taken care of and the schedule of events and the practices and the coaches and, and kind of help them see how you, how you run an organization. So, we are excited for it, um, and it is going to run. There were, um, over forty-five kids that signed up for it, so we, we're going to have to turn a few away, so. There. Thank you.
And, uh, I'm proud to say that our Relief Association for the Fire Department has sponsored some of that advertising, so giving back to the community in that way.
Yes. Um, I think, uh, Security Bank and Trust, um, was a high-level partner. Um, I know the Legion, Howard Lake, A&amp;W, um, anyway, there was, I think the last time I looked, there were seven or eight different partners that, that gave very generously, so. Um, capital improvements, let's see, oh, uh, this summer, we're going to be doing a major phone system upgrade. Um, I have been learning a lot more about phones, I guess they've really changed in the past twenty-five years or so, um, most of them just run off of the internet now. And so, um, we do have a voice-over IP system, however, that system is no longer, is at end of life and will no longer be supported, and in this day and age of ransomware and, and cyber attacks, um, we have to have that all buttoned up. Um, what's really great about this phone system is it enhances a lot of security measures. Um, it's going to tie into our alarm system, um, our PA system, and, um, like the LED upgrade, um, because we're able to go over data lines instead of phone lines, um, we end up more than having our monthly phone and data costs, so, um, that'll end up being a savings to the district. Um, if you flip over to the second page that I handed to you, um, we are looking at a parking lot reconfiguration over the summer. Um, and you'll have to, you should look at the paper like this. Um, we have heard loud and clear from our community that driving at the 512 campus, especially in the morning and in the afternoon, is the worst thing on planet Earth. Um, and so, we want to try.
Second that.
Yeah. We want to try and make it better. Um, I know you'll find this shocking, but I don't know everything in the world, and so, um, I'm an old social studies teacher at heart, and so I connected with, um, traffic and, uh, transportation representatives from Mindott and Wright County, um, just to get a sense of what they would suggest we do to improve things there, and they said, "You need a second driveway." Um, and so if you look in the upper left-hand corner of the, of the diagram here, we're going to be building an exit-only driveway, um, that is directly east of where the buses tend to park. Um, and then what'll happen is the current driveway that's at the campus, that becomes an enter-only. Um, and this creates a flow of traffic that allows people to come in and out and not have to step all over each other. Um, really what ends up happening is when you're exiting now, um, instead of having, I mean, it's really getting reduced to basically two lanes of traffic, those who are going northbound to Howard Lake, um, and those who are coming in, and then you have to wait for that entire turn lane on six to empty before you, uh, can home, hope to come home to Winstead. Um, in this new structure, the driveway exit, um, empties onto County Road Six north, just north of that turn lane, and so commuters are going to be able to exit both north and southbound, um, with greater confidence, um, and safety. Uh, the thing that is, I know on this diagram, it also depicts changing the parking there to angled parking. Um, we're actually going to step back from that and just retain the ninety-degree parking that's there right now and just change one variable at a time and see if that's, if that works out for us. Um, it also coincides with a repaving of County Road Six this summer, and so the county has graciously offered to, to, uh, sell us the asphalt at their huge stock price so that we're, we're able to cha, we're able to save, um, more than half the price on a, on a square foot of asphalt, um, to complete the driveway project. So we look for this to be in place, um, by the start of next school year. Um, on the capital improvement thing, the, the number one, and I, I know I talked about this during the levy, but the, the number one thing that continues to give me heartache and heartburn are the, um, HVAC units and the roofing on our schools. Um, they, they start, they're starting to misbehave a little bit more than we'd like. Um, they're all basically were either installed in 2009 or 2014, and across the district, we have more than sixty of these units. Um, and so, uh, we're, we're trying desperately to come up with a solution that makes some sense. Um, in the case of our smallest rooftop units, those run about forty-five thousand dollars installed, um, and that's, uh, in our current situation, um, that's, that's a hefty sum of money. So, um, my goal is to build up the fund balance, I'd love to see it a little over two million dollars, and then potentially swap out three or four rooftop units at once, and then hold on to those in one of our sheds for some parts to be able to, to extend the life of the remaining units. So. Um, we are, this is one of the things that we're really hoping that the legislature can make a move on because, um, there are streams of funding that are super restricted in our world, that if, um, if the legislature would allow us to dip into those funds, we would be able to better take care of our, um, better take care of our buildings. Um, for enrollment and staffing, I'm pleased to report that enrollment remains steady. Um, you know, we're, we're, we continue to stay just around thirteen hundred students, we aren't anticipating a, a great drop or a great increase. Um, I'm also happy to report that this past summer, um, we had the fewest teacher, um, resignations and moves, uh, than the past four years. We, we hired about ten new teachers. Um, the past four years, we averaged a little over twenty. Um, we are anticipating a major market change in the labor for educators this summer as, um, most districts in the state of Minnesota are going to be cutting, um, positions. Um, and so we anticipate that, um, unlike in years past where it's been difficult to find teachers for any kind of position, we do anticipate any open positions that we might have, end up having, um, that they would be very, there'd be, there'd be a few more candidates, and we have already seen that. Um, we've recently extended an offer to, um, an AG instructor, and usually you can't find any of those, and we actually had three or four apply. Um, we're conducting interviews for a science instructor at the high school, and those are also nearly impossible to find, and we have a, a candidate pool of over ten. So, um, we're seeing, we're seeing some change in the labor market there, which is great. Uh, next year, we are going to start implementing the district communication plan during the strategic plan. Um, it came loud and clear that the district doesn't communicate really good, and, um, I think that's a pretty common concern out of most constituencies of school districts, um, but we want to do better, so we have been working really hard on a communication plan to, to speak with one unified voice and, and set expectations so that the community knows this is, this is how the district communicates, um, and this is how you can get ahold of us, um, and that it, it, uh, it protects our brand, so to speak. Anyway, those are my reports, if you have any, I'm open for any questions or comments or suggestions.
I was going to mention on the grade-level buildings, are you getting any pushback from the public around transportation, like, you know, if you move to a grade-level building, everybody's in another part of the town, and people are complaining, "Hey, gee whiz, instead of a five-minute drive, now I got fifteen." Are you getting pushback on that at all?
Yeah, that's a good question, Tim. That was, that was kind of, that's the number-one piece of feedback, um, and I think in some cases, it, it's true that, uh, that some children will experience a, a slightly longer drive, um, if they're on the bus, um, you know, especially like in this case, if you live a block away from Winstead and you're going to be taking a bus, um, and you're headed to Waverly, obviously, obviously that changes how much you're going to be on the bus. Um, the best, the, the best solution as other districts are maneuvering through a grade-level change like this as well is to create a hub system where all the buses end up at one spot, you transfer, you shuttle, and then you, you move off, and that, that seems to be the most common and efficient way to handle that. Um, in some respects, you know, for instance, if grades three and four end up here in Winstead and grades K and two go to Waverly, there would, of course, be a couple of years where the, the students would be in, in Winstead. Um, and the nice thing about having the 512 building is all students end up there eventually, um, and so there's, there's always going to be a bus ride for any kid at some point in time. So, there's, there's not unfortunately really a, a way around it, and like I kind of opened up by saying, um, at the school district, the, the way that we manage money the most is by attacking the place where we spend the most money, which is in staffing. And what's happening right now is we, we're spending more on staffing than the revenue that we're taking in, um, from the state, and so that is not sustainable and it's not appropriate to continue on that path. We have to, we have to look for something different.
Where's the biggest draw on the staff? Is it teachers, paras, what?
It's teachers, and it's not even close, yeah. Yeah, well, we have, um, we have about a hundred and seventy-five employees across the district, and a hundred of them are teachers. Um, and so they, the teacher contract, um, is about sixty, sixty-five percent of the district's budget.
From the day you walked in till today, what has surprised you the most?
What is surpris, that's a good question, Tom. Um, I, can I do a personal answer? The thing that I have appreciated the most is, um, this is my first superintendent job, and, um, I, this has been, and it's not even close, my favorite job I've ever had in education, and I think a big part of it is just, um, being able to solve big problems and think about things, um, in, in a galactic kind of long-range way, um, is, I, I think kind of what my soul speaks to. Um, I do, I do miss the kids, you know, being and interacting with them on, on a daily basis, um, but I'm, I'm surprised as to how, um, fulfilling this job has been, and I think a big part of it, um, this is absolutely me, you know, buttering everybody up, but it's, it's just been how welcoming. but it's, it's just been how welcoming everybody has been. That doesn't mean all the emails are super nice that get sent my way, and that's okay. But I think just speaking generally, just everybody being ridiculously supportive and being able to rally around kids, you know, and that these are kids and that everybody wants what's best for them. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the work that you're doing.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate you all. Also, I, I need to put a plug in for Neil. I know. The, so I had a, a tree branch fall down during the storm, and I texted him, and he was like, we're on it. It was great. It was like five minutes after I texted, so thanks, Neil, for doing it. It hasn't, I mean, the, the tree limb hasn't been taken care of yet, but it will be.
But I have talked to them, yes.
Yeah, I know. But on a more serious front, like, in case you weren't aware, Neil is volunteering quite a bit of time leading a new DECA group at the school. And, and just, that, that just again goes to show you how many community members in some ways that are unspoken and unadvertised are giving a shocking amount of time to the school, our community, and its kids. And this DECA thing is, is a beast, and there's a lot of work to it that Neil's putting on it, so thank you, Neil.
Thanks.
Will you extend me the tree branch service as well?
Yeah, you can call Chris directly.
We're on to the open forum next. If anybody has anything to come to the desk with, please list your name, address, topic you wish to discuss. Takers. All right. City administrator update and notes.
I don't have a lot. We may be rescheduling the April 1st meeting, likely keeping our morning work session like we have, but turning that into a council meeting, depending on a possible planning and zoning talk. And I know I'm going to get questions on when the brush site's going to open, and we need things to dry out there a little bit. So, that'll be, to be determined this time. That's all I have.
Nope. No, sir.
I don't have anything extra either. So, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
You can either adjourn it or take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I will second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.